Evening, it's seven to six thirty. We have a call and we'll call a planning board meeting to order. First up for general information will be Randy Iser and a Randy Iser, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. What we have on the screen before us is a parcel plan of Sapphire Estates owned by Ron Berkhum. And what he's trying to do is change two of the lots. When the subdivision was approved, Lot One and Lot Sixteen had some excess land on the side of the road, which is good for nothing, but we didn't, he didn't have anything he wanted to do with it, so we made it part of the lots. Now he's concerned that some of the abutters may, at some point in the future, try to acquire some of those lots, what I show as parcel A and parcel B, and try to gain frontage off of Sapphire Estates, the road. And I've told him that the planning board's decision was that there is no further subdivision, but he's concerned that sometime in the future, things may change. He does not want to upset the current stature of his subdivision. So he wants to take parcel A and parcel B and make common space out of that, which will not, will take it away from Lot One and Lot Sixteen. I've called them Revised Lot One and Revised Lot Sixteen. They meet the requirement of the zoning bylaw, one hundred seventy-five feet of frontage, one hundred fifty foot square fits in the lot. And so that's the gist of the plan.
Okay, so just to be clear, Randy, Lot One and Lot Sixteen, as revised, meet zoning? And parcel A and parcel B are just going to be what?
Common land, open space. Just not part of, they're going to belong to either Berkhum himself, or I don't think he's got a homeowners association out there, but he just doesn't want them to be privately owned, so that if the planning board's vision, if you will, changes in the future, he doesn't want any extra lots being accessed off of his road.
Randy, doesn't, doesn't common land suggest that the owners of the individual lots in the development owned it, owned undivided interest in the common land?
Well, that's what one would assume, but I have no idea what he wants to do with it, Mike, other than keep it away from the, the abutters.
I mean, obviously, they're not a building lots, so they can't do anything except become, I mean, who's going to maintain them?
He will have to.
But there's going to be like, there's going to grow, overgrown with wood like they are now?
Well, I, I would imagine, if that's what it is now, then it would probably stay like that. If it was, if it was lawn or something, I'm sure he would maintain it.
Okay, I mean, well, I don't, I don't see, I don't see any problem with what he wants to do, just kind of, just kind of different.
Yeah, I hear you.
Randy, with Lot One, the one pointing to the former Shala property, that's APR land now, so that cannot be.
It's not.
So.
Joe, that's not APR. That's the, that's the slaughterhouse, and that isn't an APR.
Oh, good to know, okay.
It's the land behind the slaughterhouse.
So that's what he's concerned about.
He's concerned with Shala, and also, there's two abutters to the north that would, you know, potentially have access, particularly the, the, the one that's got the longest amount of frontage there, or, or budding that parcel A. I think it's, it's Witoch right now. They have, they have enough land there that they possibly could create a second lot, and that he's definitely concerned about that.
All right, I mean, any other question, any other comments on the board?
I'll make a motion to authorize signature at the APR.
Second.
There are second, all in favor? Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Hi. Mr. Zagradik?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Sir, Mr. Sazinski?
Aye.
And Maximaski, aye, unanimous, aye.
Okay, gentlemen, how do we deal with this now, as far as getting the plan signed?
Anyone, anyone, Joe, Bill, or myself can sign it.
Yeah, but I have to circulate, I still have to get, circulate around a letter that has to be filed with the Registry of Deeds to authorize that.
Okay.
I was gonna, I was thinking I'd run into people somehow, and that, but I'm just going to drop it in the mail tomorrow to one of you, and have you send it on to the others. So all five of us have to sign the letter to approve any one of the three of us signing the documents.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so I'll get ahold of one of you and get the plan signed, and, and I've got the Form A, and we'll, we'll deal with that. I guess, Jimmy, you'll have to, you want me to send you the Form A, so you can tell me what the fee is going to be?
Yeah, it, it's not going to be based on frontage, because it's kind of a real, you're going, I mean, it's a, I'll, I'll figure out some reasonable fee.
Okay, I'll just, I'll make a PDF of it and send it, I'll email it to you, and then you can just get it back to me, and I'll add that to the.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Okay, all right, great.
So was there no, is there no stipulation about how parcel A and parcel B will be maintained?
There is nothing. Again, if, as long as Berkhum owns that, he will make sure, he won't let it get ugly. I can guarantee you that. He's got a lot of lots left in there, and I'm, I know he wants to keep it nice, and I think ultimately, he wants to live out there. So he'll, he'll make sure it's, it stays, as long as he's in charge. And it may be, if, they may be just woods right now, for the most part, anyhow.
Okay. I guess you need to move it up, Bill.
Okay. Take that out.
Good job, Bill, that was fast.
Look at that.
Next. Okay, so if I may, I have another question regarding something else.
Yep.
And that is the lot on Middle Street that was a one-lot subdivision for Valley Real Estate, Peter Jelineus, next to Ted Kozier. There's a potential buyer of that lot, and he has been in contact with Mr. Kozier about gaining access and a water or utility easement and access easement over Kozier's property off of Kozier Lane, instead of accessing it off of Middle Street. And I know that I said something, I sent an email to you guys about possibly a permit for access over something other than frontage, and you've told me that that is not appropriate, and possibly, but, but possibly, a common drive situation might work. So I just need to get a feel from the board, what, what your opinions are on that, so I can talk to this client and advise him accordingly as to what he needs to do to move forward.
Okay, first of all, on the access across other frontage, the way the intent of that bylaw was that if a person would need to own the frontage on both the street that they have legal access, and on a street that they want to go, where they want to go access other than frontage, they, it wasn't intended to be, get an easement from somebody across somebody else's lot on frontage. However, the common driveway is a possibility, provided both houses would have truly a common driveway. In this case, Mr. Kozier would have to have this easement as his driveway as well.
Okay, and that wouldn't work, I'm sure of that, because of where his house is situated. But I'll have to talk to them, I just needed to understand, you know, the intricacies of it, and I do now, I get what you're saying, so I will talk to this gentleman and see what he wants to do.
But what, what if the easement was there before this request was made?
It would have to be there before the subdivision was put in.
Well, even, even so, that I don't think it would, it would.
Yeah, even then, it wouldn't matter, because they, they need to, they need to own both frontage areas of that lot.
And Jimmy?
Yeah.
I, I think it would behoove you to fine-tune that, the language in the bylaw, because looking at it right now, it tells me that I can access, I don't need frontage on the, my side or rear yard to access. It just says that you, the planning board can allow over any side or rear yard. So it, it just isn't clear. I understand what you're saying, that the intent wasn't there, but that's not what I read in the bylaw.
Okay, so noted.
Okay, all right, so that's all I have this evening. You have anything exciting happening tonight?
Can't really do a lot of exciting stuff without having a public hearing.
So have you figured, have you figured out how to hold a public hearing?
No, not, the reason is, if it's a simple public hearing, like we've got, I'll, I'll use, we've got an example of somebody off of, I think it's High Middle that wants an accessory apartment. That's a simple thing, we could probably hold a public hearing on that. We could probably hold a public hearing on the zoning amendments for town meeting, because those don't, I think are not going to have high interest. But we have several public hearings pending that have a lot of interest from abutters and other townspeople. And it would probably be a bit difficult to have a really well-informed public hearing like this. Where you may have, I want to say, as many as twenty or thirty people trying to put their, their input into it.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Including some who are not tech savvy enough to make their voices heard.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, no, I, I, I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't push the issue, I get it, it's too difficult, no question about it. Okay, I just need to understand.
Jim, and Randy?
Yes, sir.
Jim, there was, you were telling me that the governor would make an extension, you know, how we have the forty-five days to respond under a site plan.
Yes.
Evidently, that is going to be extended to when the quarantine is lifted, and they will give the planning board an extension, so we're not under the gun with the, the time constraints.
That's right, and we, the, the governor has given people, boards that have public hearings like this, forty-five days after the moratorium, for lack of a better term, ends, to conduct your public hearing and make a decision.
Gotcha, okay, well, if anybody comes to me that needs a public hearing, I would certainly advise them to wait until the state of emergency has been lifted, and we can get back to normal business, unless it's something really simple.
Yeah, because I've got, I've had a few people call me, they've got, they've got something ready to apply for special permit. And I told them, you can apply, but when we, we really can't do anything with it. And so they, I says, you know, if you wait until this, this, lack of, like, is a moratorium, for lack of a better term, is over, then apply, then we can go on business as usual, be the easiest way, as opposed to apply, and then now you sit and wait.
Gotcha. All right, that's all I have this evening. I guess I can, I will check out now, because I'm sure there's nothing more I need to listen to. Thanks for your time, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks.
I believe Ann Bronner was next.
Hello, I'm so, my name is Ann Bronner, and I live at one ninety-eight Rocky Hill Road, and I think I just got some of my information already. I'd like to install an accessory apartment in my basement. I have a dear friend of mine that's moving back to the area permanently, and we thought that it would make sense to share expenses. So I have done preliminary work, I talked to Tim Nyheart, I have plans, I have the driveway sketched out by Randy, and everything that I can think of. So my understanding from listening to the meeting tonight is that I need to wait and do it at a public meeting?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we, we could technically could accept it now, but if you applied, it's just going to sit in limbo until this thing kind of clears up, and we can continue, give it, give you a date. Are you on septic or septic?
Septic.
Septic, or do you have something from the Board of Health that says your system can accept the extra, extra room?
Uh, no, but I didn't do that yet. I do have my septic plans, but I haven't contacted the Board of Health.
Okay, that's part of the application, either, the, the Board of Health can give you direction on what's needed for that.
Okay.
Because we need, if you're on septic, it's no big deal, but if you're on septic, you're going to be adding a bedroom, possibly a kitchen and bathroom. And you need to make sure, your septic needs to be able to handle the additional load.
Okay.
And the certification from the Board of Health is part of the application process.
Yes.
Okay, and so do I just fill out the regular building permit, go to the Board of Health, get that done?
No, you need to go to the Board of Health separately to get that. It'll be, it'll be a little letter that they give you that says your septic system is either okay, or you need to put a bigger system in.
Okay, and so just turn that in with a building permit and send that to you people?
Well, you need, the certification from the Board of Health will be part of the application to the planning board for the, for the accessory apartment.
And the building permit comes later, after our approvals.
Correct.
Right, so.
That's what I needed to know.
So you want to go to section twenty-six of the zoning bylaw, and that's available, HadleyMA.org.
Yeah, I have it printed out here.
Okay, and then you can go down the, the list of what the requirements are.
Okay.
And that also goes through the.
I have done that, I've made, you know, it's under nine hundred square feet, I have reviewed it. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and then there is.
I understand that if the house is sold.
Yeah, so the, what you're looking for is in section twenty-six point two, twenty-six point two point one, with the Board of Health approval. So that is part of what you need to bring into us as part of your application package. And after, then we schedule a public hearing, then there's an appeal period, and after that, you can apply for a building permit.
Okay, and so when you say bring it in to you, how do I submit it during these times?
When we, when we are able to. Conduct regular hearings again, we get into a regular scheduled planning board meeting, and we'll set, give you a date right there for your public, for your public hearing.
And so you don't want to see the plans or anything in advance at that public hearing?
Well, correct. Well, you will be. You'll be filing the plans with the planning board. The public hearing, let's say that we are open in May, so you, if you were to come to our first Tuesday in May, and gave us a complete application, we would be scheduling your public hearing for the first Tuesday of June.
Okay.
So yes, you have, you need to file a complete package in advance of the hearing. That's how things get, get all rolling. We also need abutters' addresses on mailing labels.
Two sets of abutters on either mailing labels or envelopes, your choice, whichever is easier. You can get that from the Board, that from the Board of Assessors.
Okay, and, and how far in each direction?
Abutters, and abutters to abutters within three hundred feet of your property line, including across the street.
Okay. Okay.
The assessors have a little system, when you ask for that, they, they will, they can do, give that, give that out to you pretty easily. If you get somebody wanting a butters list, they'll know what you need.
Okay, all right, perfect.
And.
And so I'm going to have this package complete, do I bring it to the town hall?
You bring it to a planning board meeting.
Planning board meeting, okay. And so, so I guess, I, I don't understand, so you don't want to see it in advance of a planning board?
Either I froze, or.
When we start to meet again, you will need to apply, you'll need six sets of plans. They can be an eight and a half by eleven, we don't, they don't need to be big, full-size plans.
Okay.
The two sets of butters list, the information from the Board of Health, and everything else that's in the section twenty-six that Bill talked about. Bring that to a regularly scheduled planning board meeting. Normally, we normally meet first and third Tuesday of every month, that's beginning at six thirty. Just walk in with that information. We'll call you when your time is, when it's ready. Give us the plan, we'll take a quick look at it, make sure it's complete. Give you an application to fill out, a very simple name, address, what you're going to do. And we'll give you a, a filing fee and a filing and a public hearing date. The filing fee is typically three hundred and twenty-five dollars for an accessory apartment. You'll file that with the town clerk, show up at the public hearing, tell us what you want to do, and go from there.
All right, perfect, great, well, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Let's see, oh, we want to make a, Bill, you want to make a motion to continue the application to redevelop Hadley Garage?
I've had some move.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up, Jim, what, what do we?
He asked for a motion.
Motion to continue the public hearing for special permit for site plan approval for the Hadley Garage at ninety-seven Russell Street.
Okay.
To, a date to be announced, pending what, we could continue the public hearing. Hopefully, it'll be the third Tuesday in May, but we're not sure of that.
So Mark made the motion, and who seconded?
I made the motion, Mark seconded it.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Sazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Zagradik?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
And myself is also aye. Motion passes unanimously. I'm going to schedule the zoning amendments for the third Tuesday in May. Just want to let, let everybody know about that. And hopefully, we can have a public hearing, hopefully, we can continue public hearings on that date. We will see.
If I can ask a question, going back to the previous Ann, Ann Bronner. So are we discouraging people from submitting their packages and mailing them into town hall to?
Yes, yes. Because a lot of time, people will mail them in, and it won't be complete, and then we're going to go chasing them. We can't schedule a public hearing anyways, so it doesn't make sense just to apply for the sake of applying, because the governor has said, you know, normally, there's a timeframe, but that timeframe has been extended for quite a while.
Okay.
So.
The other part of it is that technically, town hall is closed to us, too.
Got it.
The tax collector checks our mailbox, she, she's in, she is working and is in charge of getting the mail and sorting it, and she calls me if there's anything that looks important in there.
I feel wounded, I'm not essential personnel.
That has its advantages sometimes.
Yes.
What else do we have?
Uh, let's see, we have a couple of more people here. John McMillan, I think you were next.
Can you hear me? Bill, can you hear me?
Yes.
I hear you, John. Okay. Oh, hi, hi, Mark. Um, last meeting, we were discussing the lighting control for the new fire substation, and I didn't have all the information, but I have sent an email to Bill, and I can explain how we are controlling those exterior lights. We were originally here two weeks ago to ask for your permission to add two more exterior pole lights. They were basically on the access drive between the existing parking area and the apparatus apron, in front of the apparatus base. That was added at the last couple of meetings with the planning board. But the light fixtures that we have currently installed and are installing do have a photocell and a motion detector on each light. So you were concerned that the lights would be able to go off, and only come on when the, when there was somebody, you know, passing underneath, basically. So we have confirmed that that is possible. So that's the concern that you had two weeks ago. I can say that we can accommodate that by basically dimming the light down to zero percent until there is a motion sensor triggered on that light. And then we can, then we can time that light for between five and thirty minutes on, before it will shut off and basically recycle. There are some lights on the, on the building, too. There are two wall packs in front of the apparatus doors that are wall-mounted, but operate the exact same way. They have photocells and motion, motion detectors, and they will come on and off, just like the poles will if somebody passes in front of the building. There are other lights over the entrance and exit doors of the building. Those are on photocell only, those are dust, dust to dawn. They are that way for security over the doors and safety. There is a, over the front canopy, over the front door, we have a video phone that connects to the emergency dispatcher, and we like those lights to stay on all night, you know, for, in case somebody has a personal emergency and wants to, you know, comes to the building not realizing no one's there, they have an opportunity to talk to a dispatcher, possibly get their emergency resolved. Does that meet with your approval?
Who's going to be in charge of programming it?
Uh, it would be basically the committee, the fire chief, I believe. I, I, I see there's a chief on the participants level, but I don't see that, well, now he can speak, maybe, is that you, Mike?
That's correct.
Okay. So my answer would be the fire chief.
Okay.
Mike, I believe that that, that photocells and timers and everything else meets your concern, or satisfies your concern, is that correct?
Yeah, didn't want it lit up all night long.
So it would be what needed and stay on for.
Mike's here. He just didn't want a thing lit up all night in a residential area, I can understand that. Help this house.
Well, originally, what we had set up was the lights were going to be on all, dust to dawn, but they're only going to be at a forty percent level, so they're going to be very dimmed. But I understand your concern, and we can, we can change it to zero percent.
Well, it depends what, what, what is it, what, what is it forty percent of? I don't know if that's dim or not.
Neither do I, not until we actually see it.
No. Okay, I think this works, don't you?
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
If I could just say, John, that if they were on all night at forty percent, and then they were triggered to go on to hundred percent, that would obviously be instant. If they're going from off to on, I believe you answered my question last time, that they, the fixture type would be an instant on?
Yeah, I did check. The LEDs are basically instant on, within like five seconds. And they go from off to, they go from on to off, they ramp down, and it takes about five minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed changes.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor, Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Zagradik?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Sars?
Aye.
I, and I, I also am aye, so unanimous approval.
I think we are probably, if it's going to be unanimous, just declare that. And not take a roll call unless there's going to be a.
All right, we can do that.
Can we do a thumbs up, and then you can see if it's unanimous or not?
I think, I think it's a small enough group that somebody can say something if they object.
Yeah.
Like Mike did last time.
Yeah. That's true, unless we hear a nade, it'll, it'll be considered unanimous. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hey, Mark.
Take care, John.
Uh.
John McMillan?
Well, he, we're just finished with him, so.
So he had, he had a phone and that on? Also, he had, he had a phone and that on?
Uh, there's, there was a, a third number here. There was a, a, someone who was just identified as a, uh, phone number, but they left too. And, uh.
Looks like we just have the chief and John now, uh, and John from Hadley Media.
And, um, and the chief is muted anyway, um.
Mike Spankable, do you have anything else, or are you just here listening for the heck of it now?
I'm still at work, I was just listening while I was getting some more work done.
Okay, that's fine, okay, I just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything else to comment on.
So Tom Reedy was on, and I am not sure if, um, he had anything else or just wanted to hear what we said about his, uh.
As, as soon as we voted on the north of the Hadley Garage, he signed off.
Okay. Alright, then I won't bother tracking him down to find out.
Oh, um, Megan's Way. As far as I know, Megan's Way meets all the subdivision requirements. And when, uh, David Nixon called me during the week on that, I said, the only outstanding item was to be sure that he had, that Chris Okafor had a as-built plan. That was, David Nixon said, last time he talked to Chris, that was, he didn't have it. I checked with Randy, and he has given Chris Okafor an as-built. So he should have everything we, we needed for approving it and telling me, or accepting the road as a town road.
Okay, so we had the, this development coordination meeting this afternoon. And at the end of it, uh, David Nixon did raise the question to Chris, and I was participating. And what Chris was saying is, yes, he has the same plan that we have, but he says it is insufficient to satisfy Mass DOT to accept the road onto the chapter ninety reimbursement list. And Chris did say that he had talked with you, Jim, and that you had gone to Mass DOT and they gave you.
I, I tried to go to Mass DOT and find out what's required for chapter ninety, and they haven't got back to me with who I need to talk to, I've called them twice on it.
Okay, so apparently Chris thought you had already gone and had been given what was required.
And I've not been able to find anybody over there, talk to that. The, the gentleman that's, we've been dealing with for the Hadley Garage.
Yeah.
I've asked him for a contact over there, and he said he was gonna give my name to somebody to have a contact rate. And that hasn't happened, I'll give, I'll give him a call again tomorrow.
So, uh, so what I could tell you is Chris is very much still unsatisfied. Uh, he was talking about, um, needing a, um, he was talking about a, an engineer's signature on it, that what, what he does have is a survey, and he wants the as-built plan that will satisfy the state. He indicated to me that the state had given you, I asked him for a citation. He said, oh, the, the chairman of the planning board has it, um, but I guess not.
Um.
Jim or, or Bill, I'll, I'll probably get into legal territory. It, it almost seems unfair to the developer who has complied with all our rules and regulations regarding our subdivision and what is necessary for approval. Have someone come in with a new set of lists to trump our subdivision regulations. Perhaps we should, if we're going to incorporate those rules and regulations, they should be incorporated. And the new people can comply with what Christopher wants.
Well.
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, I gotta say, if it's state regulations, they trump ours, our local regulations.
I agree, but we have to make that aware to the, the developer because right now, we're putting the, the developer who seems to try to comply with all our rules and regulations.
I, I raised that, and basically, Chris, David Nixon and I talked about that, I asked David Nixon if there was, it, it's a lot of land use regulations, as you've seen, whether it's Conservation Commission rules versus the planning board rules, you know, they're, they're going like this. They're just passing each other in the night. So I asked David Nixon if there was a specific requirement in the statutory process for accepting a public way, that there be an as-built plan. And he said that he really didn't know, it had never come up, but that he thought that, um, if it would be bad optics to request a, um, approval or acceptance of a way that the DPW directors, uh, did not support. Uh, and that's always been, I don't think we've ever seen a way accepted over the objection of, uh, the DPW or the highway chief. So, um, I will do a little more digging into the chapter ninety regulations to see if I can find, uh, find something, if we've been doing it wrong, you know, we, we just say as-built plan. There, there is a definition of as-built plan out there somewhere, yes, we probably should amend the regulations to, um, to address that. Uh, but that's been the disconnect all along, we, Chris, when Chris says he doesn't have an as-built plan, he is saying that the same plan that we have is not satisfactory, so. We've gotta straighten that out.
And so it sounds like Joe's question is, is Chris's definition of an as-built plan what we've been going by up until now, or is this Chris's new definition?
Well.
Right?
Yeah, I think that's what Joe was saying, but the, the fact is, if the, if there is a definition of an as-built plan out there that we should have been working off of, and we haven't, um, you know, I'm, okay, he pointed it out. We now, we, we, at least we know what we're talking about now.
But, but whose responsibility is it to point out that our definition is lacking? Is it a lawyer's?
Uh, we didn't run the subdivision regulations past town council. Uh, we did that pretty much all with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Alright.
Uh, and even if we had run it by town council, when, if you used the buzzword as-built plan, if, if it turned out that we had been using a planning definition of as-built plan, and there is a real-world definition of as-built plan out there, um, yeah, we should, probably should have caught it in the, uh, application process, in the drafting of regulations.
If the PVPC says it's okay, and we're, we're relying on their guidance, what's the problem?
The, the, if the state has a different regulation that, that the PVPC and we are not aware of, we've gotta find out what that means.
But, but isn't that why we pay the PVPC to tell us about this stuff?
Uh.
I'm being a bit argumentative here, but I, I think that, you know, us trying to debate what the state's telling us to do and what ours is is pointless because the, it's the PVPC's responsibility, it's not the, the, the DPW had nor ours, it's what PVPC told.
But, but we're in the middle of it now. Uh, th- those regulations were drafted, we're talking three, four years ago now, five years ago. Um, and, uh, this is the first subdivision road, well, actually, this is even a road acceptance under the old subdivision rules. So. Point is, we're now, someone has pointed out that there is a discrepancy. And, um, we're, we need to look into it a little more, but at least we have advanced this enough so we know what we're talking about.
We'll get to the bottom of it, as soon as I can find who, who I need to speak to at P, at DOT, we should be, should be easy enough to address once we find out.
Yeah.
So.
And I would imagine an attorney, if Megan's Way were to push it, would say, what has the town of Hadley's planning board asked previously under this standard? But are you saying this is the first one under this standard?
No, actually, I'm remembering now, this is under the old standard.
Okay.
This is the old standard. We haven't had any application, we've had one application under the new standard.
Okay.
That's the one, uh, was it, what's the one that, uh, which is the Wofford Wishkowitz, Alva Shannon.
Uh, yeah, that was, uh, a construction company, Valley Building Company.
Right.
So, um, but we come down, what we come down to is that even, i- i- it's not our decision to make at this point. It's a meeting decision to make, and you can bet someone's gonna stand up and say, what does the DPW say? Um, and we know what the DPW says, that we don't have enough information. So, um, and, and in all honesty, we did, uh, as you may recall, well, not all of you, but we did we haven't accepted the road, but we did accept what, said it was an as-built plan for the, uh, road off, uh, Rocky Hill Road. Um, new subdivision off Rocky Hill Road. And, um, turned out when, um, Carl Sightwork went out there to dig up something and dug up utility lines instead, they realized, we all realized the as-built plan was wrong. So, um, so let's, we just keep on, gotta resolve it.
Yeah.
So we'll find out more information.
Affordable Housing Trust, we have any, I know, we've been, we've been re-discussing the, uh, calculation, and I've been thinking about that. The calculations are all over the place, some of them are asking for all kinds of money, and some of them are asking for reasonable amounts. I think the ones that are asking for huge amounts of money are trying to discourage donations to the Affordable Housing Trust. That's what it appears to me, and the ones that have a more reasonable number are more inclined to encourage the donation to the Affordable Housing Trust.
I think you're absolutely right, that, that is, uh, what, uh, that's clearly what comes across, that, um, and I think we should have to talk about it, I'm sure, but I think we do, we would support, favor donations.
That's my opinion. I mean, we, we've got a, it would, I think it would be who would simply have a decent fund that could be used when the right circumstances arise. Mike, you had some ideas on a calculation, did you ever run numbers on it?
Uh, I did, but I don't have them with me, but it, but it's basically, the calculation would entail determining what the cost to build a property, the affordable housing unit was, and we have to define what the unit is, is it a two-bedroom, is it a three-bedroom, is it a one-bedroom? What the cost is, including the land, insurance costs, over a period of, say, twenty years. And then seeing what the rents would be that we would get, i.e. the subsidized rents. And so the actual subsidized cost that would go into the fund would be the difference between the cost of constructing, maintaining, insuring, and the rents over a twenty-year period. And you could discount that back to the president, say it three and a half percent, four percent. And that, a- and that would be what would be contributed to the trust fund, that difference. Because what are you actually subsidizing, you're subsidizing what the amortization cost of building it would be versus what the rents are coming in. And that's the, and that's what's being subsidized, tell, tell me if I'm wrong, I think, I'm just trying to come up with a way to mathematically calculate it, as opposed to just throwing something against the wall, which seemed to be almost happening, and we got all the examples in.
I, I agree with that, but I just wanted, you know, we would, what, what, your, your, your logic sounds decent, but what would a number be for a lot, is a, is a question I would have. Because the way you presented it, it sounds like it would be fairly significant.
Well, I, I recall talking to somebody in the, um, uh, senior center, the director there, whatever her name is, and, uh, she told me that the subsidized rent for a two-bedroom apartment was nine, nine hundred dollars a month. So I know what it costs, okay? I know, I know what the revenue is coming in, all we're gonna do is determine what it costs to build it, and the difference is what's being subsidized. Follow me?
Yes.
Apparently, Mike, Mike's bringing up the point of cost analysis, uh, the gesture is very noble. However, the devil is gonna be in the detail. If the house that, the town says could be rehabbed for affordable housing, and we can use the money from the trust fund, will it have to go before a town meeting, will it have to go before our board? Because.
Town meeting, the way, the, the way the housing trust fund is set up, the money expended from the housing trust needs town meeting approval.
Yeah, but the calculation of what the developer has to put in the trust fund is completely separate from how the trust fund is spending the money, it's a completely separate calculation.
Yeah, the, the money that's being put into the trust fund, all they need is the approval of the board and acceptance from the board of trustees of the trust fund.
I mean, yeah, wh- when we got the original contribution from Barry from East Street Commons, I mean, it was essentially a negotiated contribution, it wasn't something that was calculated based on a mathematical formula.
That's correct. Yeah. And we, from this, from going forward with this fund, it would be nice to have a calculation that this is the way it's gotta be. If you wanna contribute to the fund, this is the, this is the formula. If you don't like the contribution rate, then you gotta put the house on your, put that subsidized, uh, item on your property someplace.
So basically, we got a, the cost calculation, revenue calculation, both are pretty simple to come up with. The cost calculation, whatever cost to build it, the cost of the land, insurance, taxes, we got a lump sum, okay, we got a lump sum. What is the cost to amortize that sum over, say, a fifteen-year mortgage? That's the actual cost of the property. The next question is, what are the rents coming in? That's the revenue, the difference is what goes into the trust fund. And like, the only variable is what is being built, okay? Is it a one-bedroom, is it a two-bedroom, is it a three-bedroom?
The way, oh, you're talking about a single, well, the way the housing trust fund is written for a subdivision
Yeah.
is a single-family home.
Yeah.
Um, I would probably guess two to three bedrooms.
Yeah.
Probably one and a half baths, a, a normal, probably like, uh, I'm gonna take a wild guess, somewhere around a twelve to fourteen hundred square foot house.
Well, yeah, that, that calculation is pretty easy to come up with as to what it's gonna cost, a- a- and I don't think, when you determine what the cost is, that should, there should be no profit built into that cost, it's just, it's the wholesale cost, okay?
Correct, wholesale cost.
That's what we're gonna be subsidizing off of, the wholesale cost of the property.
Right.
It's not gonna be any twenty percent or thirty percent or whatever the hell the profit margin is.
If I get, if I get you the wholesale cost of a house, Mike, can you run the numbers and come up with a a simple fee for like a, say a twelve to fourteen hundred square foot house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna put the numbers in an amortization schedule, you know? And, and we'll, we'll see what the amortized cost is, and then we see what the rents are, and that's what's being subsidized, you gotta bring it all back to the president, okay?
That's fine, okay, I'll, I'll try to get you the, the wholesale cost of a house.
That was good.
On a square foot basis.
Floating.
I mean, obviously, that's a market rate, I mean, it really moves around, but I guess you're gonna take the lower end because it's public housing. It's not something where you're opting in for all these extras, right?
Well, yeah, this is gonna, this is gonna be a, like a simplified, it's not gonna be a high-end house, it's gonna be, you know, like the Formica count, it's not gonna be quartz, gotta be some, a, a basic, simple house.
Let's assume it's a two-bedroom.
Okay.
Then we'll, I, because I think the rents that the woman over at the senior center gave me was for a two-bedroom, and she made the comment aside that the, the rents had gone up. And, you know, we can't control that, it's just, it is what it is, we're, we're not, we're just trying to determine, I told her a bit about the trust, housing trust fund, and immediately they think we're gonna be providing a subsidy for something. Think we're gonna be providing a subsidy for something, and that's not the point of this.
Yeah.
Calculate.
The, the Housing Trust Fund is not to provide a subsidy, it's to, to give, basically, a developer. A chunk of money to build a house at affordable cost.
Yeah, so if we, if we can come up with the wholesale price of the house, including li- li- land cost, we can figure out what the taxes would be on it. What the insurance would be on it. That's the number we're gonna amortize over, say, a fifteen-year mortgage or whatever it is right now, three percent to two-point-seven-five, I don't know. Or we, then we got the rents in, and the difference is what's being subsidized.
Then we can see how that.
Clearly, day by day, that number would change, but this is gonna be a snapshot in time. We're gonna have to rely on, when a builder comes in, he's gonna have to tell us what the wholesale price of that house is gonna be. And some engineer's gonna have to verify that. He's just not gonna pull something out of the air, you know? Okay?
Okay.
Sorry, so?
What else do you have, Bill?
Uh, we have um. Uh, received a stipulation of dismissal.
Oh, yes.
The uh, matter of Cic- Citirelli versus Planning Board et al. And uh, Joel Bard has asked that we uh. Approve his signing the stipulation of dismissal.
So, so we, we don't know, Bill, what the agreement was. That's a private matter?
It is. We uh, are, we're necessary party to this, but uh, we have no stake in it. Uh, we gave them, we gave the applicant what he wanted, the um, a butter appealed, and they have worked it out.
Do, do you recall, does anybody recall when we did the site plan? On the, the new quote-unquote new North Hadley Garage, if we provided for lighting up and down the sides of the building like that?
Well, I didn't, I didn't participate, but I don't recall that on the plans.
I don't recall that much lighting on the plan.
No, I think we've got to really look at that and ask the uh, billing inspector to. Because there, there's, there's been people bringing this up that it's really lit up at night, and it's, I would call it, in fact, a bit garish. Uh, and where you should probably see if the uh, billing inspector can enforce what we, we approved. Could we send a letter to that effect?
Well, let's go back and find out what we actually approved and compare the two before we draft a letter.
Well, could we approve the uh, the letter for the attorney to dismiss it in uh?
Yeah, that's a separate topic. Let, let's, let's.
These are two separate issues, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Dwyer, you made a motion to do the dismissal?
I'll uh, I'll let someone else make the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to uh, accept Joel Bard, how would I word that?
To approve dis- uh, approve dismissal.
Approved dismissal of the uh, lawsuit.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
And we have, the motion passes four to zero with one abstention.
So, this does not mean that we cannot, uh, once we get a look at the plans, if all of a sudden. He says a couple of lights were gonna be on the building. I remember that, but I don't remember them kind of outlining the uh, the facade of the.
Right. I, I think he put a few extra lights on the building. We'll look at the plans, we'll get a chance to see what we, what we approved.
And then one other thing, can we learn something from this, from the suit uh? Bill, probably this is directed more at you. I think we had good intentions when we thought. That there was some ongoing uh, business as a garage. Uh, and she did, did bring some paperwork in. But evidently, in one of the uh, legal ramifications that went over the email. We should have, we, the planning board should have sent it to the zoning board of appeals for a finding, rather than make that decision on our own. Is, am I correct?
That was an argument that was raised by the uh. By the abutter. But whether we can, whether there's anything to learn about that or not, I don't know, because it's been dismissed. The issue wasn't, hadn't been, hasn't been addressed.
So, you don't wanna give your legal opinion, next time we should, or should not, or we?
I, I think you're kind of asking Mr. Dwyer to step out on a limb and give advice that uh, we should be getting Joel Bard.
Yeah, I, I think next time we ca- we get a situation where someone is asking uh. Um, to, to rely on grandfathering a use that. Sort of at the, at the fringe of, of the uh, grandfather period, maybe we should ask for Joel, for town council's opinion at that point.
The Mark and Mike, uh, Bill was very subtle to us once in a while. When we thought we were practicing law. He would get out his card and he would slide it in front of us and saying.
I'd scratch off my name and put uh, John Divine Junior Esquire.
Okay.
So, okay, I'll uh, I'll contact Joel and tell him, so let it go. Uh, and I'll also try to contact Chris uh, tomorrow, just drop him an email, just to let him know that. There, there's still some, some gaps here.
Okay.
And I think that is all that I have. Um. Chinese immersion. School? Oh, uh, yeah, I guess.
Outbuilding, yes.
On the, the walk-in business. Let me see if I can bring that up.
Hey, Mark, just so you'll know, you must be using an awful lot of your RAM, because every once in a while, when you move on your picture.
Yeah.
Disappear, until you, until your, your computer can catch up. Um, your shoulder, your head will stay there, but your shoulders disappear for a second, probably because you're using so much RAM with the background.
Yeah, and it could also be that I'm on wifi, but yeah.
Not too much bro cream, is it?
So. Yeah, I am having uh, some trouble getting down to uh, my base directory here. Um, my desktop. And I don't, okay. Um, so what I'm gonna do is, let me just pull it up on my other computer here, and uh. If I can do justice to explaining it.
Well, has everybody seen what the Chinese immersion charter school has requested? You'd see the email that Bill sent out?
Yeah, they're, they're moving that barn from where it was hidden behind the building, right up. To that front little bend in their site.
Right, it'll still have fifteen-foot setbacks.
Yeah, and they're, they're increasing, was it twenty-four by twenty to twenty-four by thirty or something like that?
A twenty by twenty-four to twenty by thirty, yeah.
Yeah, slightly larger.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be the exact rendering, what the building is gonna look like, along with the landscaping?
They said it's not that, not all those options.
Emotional building, uh, so uh.
Actually, that is something that, oh, Chief has left us now.
But if we do give approval for the relocation of that shed, uh. Certainly, you would like to see a rendering, and we'll assume that what they did present to us is the ring that we're going to get.
He said that, he said that the shed will look like what he's shown.
He said it will look similar, but not with all those options.
Well.
So probably less doors and windows.
Okay, so it, it seems like we need to request more information.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it looks like a company's rendering, rather than what actually is gonna be built. And uh.
Yeah, okay, here's a picture of the proposed shed, except that it has far more options than we would use. So, what does that mean?
Means there's gonna be more stripped down, I guess. If they don't wanna draw it all up, maybe they could just take that, that photo and cross off items that they're not planning to put in. So then we can, you know, envision it.
They should be able to get us a picture of what they're going to build. It's not a big shed. And if the, the company, I'm assuming it's one of those prefab jobs, where they come up and they put it up pretty quick. They should be able to get them a picture of what you're going to build.
So, we'll contact Mark Darnold and say we need a final dime.
It said it's a two-story also, so I guess we should have a height.
It probably won't be an issue in that area, because it, it is the industrial district, so there's a higher height. So it's not gonna bust any limits.
Right.
I mean, you gotta.
The building itself is.
Taller, yeah.
I do know they're pretty, uh, well, it's not, not that much different than what was proposed, but they're, they're, they pretty much maxed out that site for um. They're. They're not com- parking compliant, they're uh. Uh, barely green space compliant.
No ball fields, they're gonna use the Young Men's Club now.
They creating a, a driveway or a walkway up to the uh, Michael's? There's some kind of a pathway off the east side of their parking lot that it looks like it's. I mean, there's no curb, so it looks like cars could come down it, but I'm not sure it's wide enough for a two-way.
Oh, that is an emergency access. Yeah, there is a chain across it.
Okay.
We did ask that they uh, we went back and forth a little bit about whether they could get something in writing. From the management, uh, WS Development about parents parking over there. And walking to the school, and WS was not interested in granting any kind of an easement or license. But we did require that they put in an emergency entrance there, so that if um. We had to get a fire truck in, there'd be another way to do it.
Right, okay.
So you're gonna request more from Mark, or you want me to do it?
Uh, I could just, he sent the email to me, so I'll just return that.
Okay.
Asking for more detail.
Okay.
Are we through with this topic?
Yeah.
If we could return briefly to the calculation of what is being subsidized uh, to the Insurance Trust. Are, are subsidized. Do they enjoy a tax break? I'm just curious, we could, might try to figure out what the taxes would be. Do they enjoy a tax break? If they subsidize housing?
Not. Good question. I'm afraid I don't know that. No, I don't know.
We might need to ask Dan Zadonic about that. Uh, generally, commercial properties can be taxed. Uh, this is why we, they're uh, in downtimes, we're always getting hit with abatement requests, that they uh.
Yeah.
They are taxed based on their revenue potential. As opposed to their raw land value.
Yeah.
And when they are not as um, producing as much revenue, the first thing they do is come back and ask to have the taxes abated. Retroactively.
Yeah, this would be an interesting thing with this uh, moratorium of how many businesses in town request an abatement. For certain things, a lot of the restaurants, et cetera, because. There's a real possibility, there's gonna be a whole bunch of abatement requests in town.
Well, the other point is gonna hit, hit our budget, because the meals and room tax.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
We're gonna take a hit.
Yeah, there's gonna have, there's gonna be a big domino effect here.
Hopefully not as bad as the oil companies.
Well, Mo- Mark, it's, it's amazing that the dairy farmers are dumping milk. So they're in the same boat, but you can't dump oil.
No.
Unless you have a pool in your backyard or company.
A cistern, yeah.
So uh.
Very big pool.
The um. Select Board meeting last week was a tribe board meeting with the school and the finance committee. And uh, so I, I did watch that, and Amy Fiden was very vocal about uh. Uh. Facing this aggressively, and Amy's the chair of the finance committee, facing this aggressively and making proactive cuts. Um, one of the, the things that uh, she had suggested was that we may not want to proceed with um. The planner position, however defined. Um. They did hire a uh, part-time human resources uh, director to step in. When the current uh, human resources director goes on active duty in a while. Um, but there was definitely talk about um, uh, cutting. And uh. So, we'll see how that plays out as they get closer to whenever town, I, I don't think they've actually set a date for town meeting yet.
No, they, they, they said, the last I heard was to be determined on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, this probably won't be the year that we get to increase the PDPC budget. Cause we were looking to double it, I think.
That's a possibility too. They're gonna, gonna have to cut every little reasonable corner they can.
Well, everybody's gonna have to reprice their services, I mean, from commercial rents on down. I mean. Otherwise, things aren't just gonna, aren't gonna work. Restaurants in Manhattan, you're not gonna be able to sit like this anymore, and so. Every, the, the economy's repricing itself, and it's gonna take a long time.
Yeah.
But I'll tell you what, I've been working at home for the last three weeks, and I don't mind it.
I've been doing it for five weeks now.
Yeah, these, these meetings are a bit inconvenient without having a public hearing, but they, they are kind of nice being able to sit here and. Seems a lot more, it's a lot more convenient in one way.
Yeah.
Poor, poor Joe is far away from, farther away from Joe's pizza. He doesn't know what to do with that meeting.
I've got a better meal tonight.
Anyway, anybody have anything else?
So, so just to rea- on this amortization of whatever the wholesale cost is, including land, blah, blah, blah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna amortize it over a fifteen-year period using the then-published fifteen-year conventional mortgage at East Hampton Savings Bank, okay?
That sounds like a plan to start with.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll get you the wholesale cost.
Yeah, including land.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
All right, I'm gonna end the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I would second.
Alright.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Media's history, thank you, and thank you, John. Bye-bye, John.